I had a long conversation with our Chief of Police, Jerry Gonzalez, today. And there's a lot of problems, many of them related to drug and alcohol and substance abuse and mental illness and our economy as well. People who are forced onto the streets because of ill health or lose their job or, I mean, there's just so many issues that are impacting the people that drop off the bottom end of our economic ladder and are stuck. And we don't have the resources. We don't have the resources at the city level. We don't have the resources at the county level, probably not at the state level, probably not at the federal level. So it's a really big problem. I do think our current city staff and particularly our police department is doing absolutely a phenomenal job with what they've got to work with. They're very respectful of people that are down on their luck. They are respecting people's constitutional rights to be, you know, part of the community and still trying to protect the community from the adverse effects of those kinds of things, you know, either property values or assaulting behavior, all of those things. So I think it's a problem that's way bigger than the city of Willets and I think we're doing the best we can at the moment. I'm certainly open to hearing other ideas and hope that we can do even better.
Well timed. Bruce?
I think everybody is on point on it. I think that really the basic issue is that the median income in Willets is something like $26,000 or $28,000 a year. I mean, that's the middle. There's a lot of people living on a lot less than that. And that just brings stress into everybody's lives. It brings stress into their own lives and it creates stress to the people that are around them. And it manifests itself in alcohol and the other issues or, you know, antisocial behavior that public safety, the police people have to deal with. There isn't a cure other than trying to build our community and build a more prosperous community by having people step up and take on responsibility and engage themselves into starting a business and becoming part of a productive part of the community. But it's a, all those things that they've mentioned certainly make public safety an issue for us.
Do you want to question Victor?
I did.
Just checking on you, just checking. All right. So I'm looking at the video people say, that was our sixth question. Do we have time? Do we have enough video for one more? Okay. Professor, this goes to you. Currently, the city will not even consider a development proposal requiring more than four household water connections due to the city's lack of water. What will you do, if anything, to remove this barrier to potential new business or housing developments?
Well, I would advise people to start collecting rainwater and setting up gray water system. I think the city, they had a guy upstairs doing that for a while. So I think our resources are plenty. I think it's just we're not managing them well and we're not incorporating the new ideas and new technology that has proliferated around Willets, but the city isn't spending money on those kinds of things, solar powered, whatever. So I don't think that that's an obstacle. I think that everybody can get more efficient with their water use and there's plenty of water.
Thank you. Holly, would you like the question?
No, go ahead. In part, I actually agree. I think that we could be using, that we need to be using our water resources better. For those of you who don't know, all of our water resources do come from surface water currently. I guess that's not true. We water some of our parks with well water through a separate irrigation line, but by and large, our water source is, you know, we have reservoirs. That is limiting. If we have a, I think they said 1977 style drought, those reservoirs will be depleted and we do not have, currently have another, any additional form of getting water into the city. In the past, we've used emergency water from the Boy Scout camp and I have met with them and they have said that they're absolutely, they are a good neighbor. They would be there for the city of Willets again. But we, as a community, need to be way more efficient. We do allow gray water systems. I think we as a, from the business end, from the planning department, we're very much encouraging on water efficiency projects. You can install a gray water system in the city of Willets right now and I encourage everyone to do that. If it's hooked up to your washer, your laundry washer, it pumps the water for you out into your garden. So that's something that we should all look into, but I think we could do more.
I love this question. I really think that we can do a lot more as a community and I'm not sure how much the city can do given our limited staff, but I think something like what Ready has been doing with the energy audits could be done with water. We could offer this opportunity to audit everybody, you know, residential and commercial uses of water, see where the leaks are, see where the inefficiencies are, and it would not only help our water supply as a community, it would help all those individuals save money. I think we could get perhaps an investment opportunity, something like what Well has been looking at, to invest in the upfront cost of putting in low-flow toilets or low-flow showerheads or gray water systems, pay for those upfront for people that can't afford that capital cost at the beginning and they pay it back over time with the savings on their water bill. So I think we could do a much more proactive kind of water conservation program here in our community and that that would be a benefit to everybody, our water bills and our water supply.
Thank you. Bruce?
I don't believe it's a true question. I don't think, I don't believe that's a fact. There may be areas of the city that where water lines are undersized for a larger number of hookups than that, but the city doesn't have a moratorium on for developments with more than four hookups, not to my knowledge.
The first thing I think we should do is drink more wine. And then shower with a friend. I'd stop right there. I'll stop there. Anyway, water is going to become priceless. We do have to start conserving. And I know that we are, we're taking less showers than we normally do. Anyway, no, I agree with Bruce. I don't think we have that kind of a problem here. We're very fortunate. There is a lot of water. We're thinking of expanding the lake up above there, raising it. We're looking, we did a dam study. We can almost double our water. Thank you.
Okay. And the video guys say we can do again? All right. This is going to go to...
How about get up and stretch for two minutes?
These guys are going to break in just a minute. So after this question, we'll take a break and you can change the videos, okay? Or if you still use videos, whatever. Okay, so this is going to go to Holly. Is there anything you would do to improve the current strained relationship between Brooktrails and Willets?
Yes. For those of you who don't know, Brooktrails filed a lawsuit against the city and we've been trying to get this solved. I just want to say that going to court on this matter is going to help nobody. We're paying lawyers, we're paying attorneys. I think, you know, our basis on the case is strong, but the fact is, is that it's going to, if it continues, if we can't reach some sort of settlement, and I think that we're all working really hard to make that happen, then a judge is going to say, yes, Willets, your right, or yes, Brooktrails, your right. They're not going to solve our problem. They're not going to interpret our contract to better serve and make sure that the communication is working better. So I think it is really important for us to get some sort of mutual settlement because it's not, it's hurting all the residents of both municipalities to be going down the track that we're going. So I'll do everything I can to make that come to a speedy conclusion.
I have on my website a kind of more expanded version of my platform. One of the things that I advocate in there is that I think the city council meetings should have representation from Brooktrails, from the rest of the unincorporated area, from the business owners who have their business in town but don't live in town, so that our, the city councils deliberations will include the voices of all the people that are affected by the decisions we make. This is one community. It doesn't end at the city boundaries. And I think we really need to incorporate their views and their ideas and their energy and work together. If we had been doing that all along, maybe this wouldn't have happened. I don't know, you know, the inside story of the lawsuit issue, but I think from now forward, it would be really nice to include that kind of representation. And also the city council members should represent themselves and the city's views at the Brooktrails meetings, so that we have cross-communication just as a routine matter. I think we can do a lot better of working together as a one large community, which is what we are.
Bruce? Prove relations with Brooktrails? Is there anything you would do to improve the current strained relationship between Brooktrails and Willets?
I kind of thought some question about this might show up and I'm a little bit, feel a little bit compromised in discussing it because of where we are. I can tell you this, that the city of Willets has contemplated very seriously its position and where it is in this litigation. We didn't initiate the litigation, we're a recipient of the litigation. The city of Willets has paid something in $25 million to build a new wastewater plant at the border of the Water Quality Center, the State Water Quality Board. The residents of the city of Willets have guaranteed that that money will be paid back through a rate structure to the city. We have a contract with Brooktrails that says they are a partner in the capital and the operating costs there in certain percentages. Brooktrails is challenging what those percentages are. It's either Brooktrails is going to pay less like they'd like and Willets is going to pay more, or it's going to stay where it's, where we think that the line has been set. So it's a, it is a, it's a tough issue, but you know, my job up here is to protect the ratepayers of city Willets, interpret that contract as the way it has been interpreted for 35 years and everybody, neither one of us are happy with the bills that we have to pay, but they have to be paid and they have to be shared.
Victor?
You know, it's something that just infuriates me that's going on. It's a waste of time and money. It doesn't do any good to go to the attorneys. And wasn't it Shakespeare's or someone that said the first thing we should do is kill all the lawyers or something? It's not doing us any good and I wish it would resolve itself and get away from the attorneys. We've got to figure some other way.
Well, that's a good lead-in. I'm total agreement. The attorneys are unconstitutional appendages on our republic. They were prohibited by the 13th Amendment that was ratified in 1812. They are part of a worldwide cabal that is robbing us all blind. And whenever there's a litigation, there's three attorneys involved: defense attorney, plaintiff's attorney, and the judge. If you want to talk about skyrocketing costs of doing anything, that's where the blame goes.
So we are two. Madge. Would you support a water rate increase to fund the Main Street water project?
That's nice and brief. I think I agree with Bruce that people are pretty maxed out on their water bills. So that's a real tough one. I think by, it's a good question. If we amortize loans over a period of time and try to keep the rates kind of where they are, I do think we could look at rate structure. There might be some ways we can charge more for people who are using water inefficiently and charge less for people that are conserving. Maybe there are some ways we can structure the inequities and look at that and review And we have to just, I think, keep our belts pretty tight and do what we can with the funds we've got. I really don't like the idea of a rate increase.
Bruce?
No.
No. Okay.
No.
Victor? No? Sir?
Another question?
Would you support...
Another que, I don't want to answer that question.
Don't.
Okay, so you're passing on the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I wouldn't. I agree with what Madge said. I think that we have, we've required, we had a lot of infrastructure things that need to be fixed and we still have those out there, but I think we need to live within the means that we have. There is, however, leaks in the main water line on Main Street. We repaired a large section of it and that got rid of a huge amount of our unaccounted-for water, unaccounted-for water loss. Where is this water going? It's leaking out of old rusty pipes and into the ground supply. So there's no question that we need to replace infrastructure. That's sort of one of our primary roles up here, is to make sure that when you turn on the tap, water comes out. And I want to encourage every, everyone to make an appointment to go up to the water plant and see what they do up there, because every high school student should have to go up there for chemistry. It is fascinating how they, what makes it so that you can just turn on your tap when you go. So I will not, I don't support increase, but we can and have been working on getting grants, water grants to help, that sometimes can fund, some of it can help our existing dollars go farther. So I think our staff has just been amazing at working on that and I think we need to continue to look that way if we can.
Thank you. So this is to you, Bruce. Would you support or oppose a high-density housing development in Willets?
I don't think that I have, the one high-density project that came to Willets since I've been on the city council was a project out by the Mormon church. It was a, and I didn't support that project. And so I'd certainly look at any project that came in, but my record so far in the 20 years that I've been here has seen one high-density project and I didn't find the merits in it myself.
Thank you. Victor?
I would like to have the problem, the high-density. We can fill our houses. No, I would like to. If we had the problem, I wouldn't mind something. A closer community, if we had that kind of a problem, I would definitely agree with. But I don't think we're going to have that kind of problem for a long time.
Sure.
Well, I think, again, it's what kind of project is being proposed and is it going to be supported by the economy and the community? If someone came in here and they had the funding to build a project and they had some way for the people who are living there to support themselves, then I certainly would. But any kind of speculative project, no. And I think the first place to start would be to use whatever space we have and the van hotel has been vacant forever and who knows how long it will be vacant, but to, you know, to use some of the space we have right now to make those kind of developments, yes.
Thank you. Holly?
Well, I'm a supporter of infill development. I think we have a lot of underutilized and vacant properties and before any new, you know, a new development, say, out by the Mormon church would be supported, I would much rather fill, you know, infill with the existing buildings. I'm a real proponent of reuse and remodeling. I'm a supporter of infill, I'm a supporter of mixed use, meaning apartments over, you know, housing over businesses, because it helps it so that it's not an abandoned town after hours because people are living there, people are around. It creates vibrant areas. And I'm a supporter of high-density. I don't think the city should do this, but I think somebody should buy the building on, across from the post office, the old Carlton apartments, and make it senior housing. Make it very dense. Make people neighbors. Make people have to share space. I mean, we, Victor and I are in this neighborhood right here and it's a very vibrant neighborhood. It's, we have small lots, which isn't ideal a lot of the time, but then I also get to see the neighbor kids run down the street and I know them by name and it adds to a sense of community. So generally, I'm in support of that type of thing, but of course, it would always depend on the merits of the project.
Thank you.
I agree very much. It depends on the merits of the project. It depends where it's located and how it's designed. My background in land use planning really qualifies me to do this kind of analysis. One of the things I did professionally for several decades was looking at the relative cost to provide services versus the revenue generated from property taxes or from sales taxes of proposed developments. So higher density in the right locations can be a real benefit to the community and to, lowers the cost of providing the services. The streets, the water, the sewer, all of that is much more efficient if you have infill and if you have relatively higher density. But it also really depends on how that, how those projects are designed. I've been going door-to-door and some of the apartment complexes are beautifully maintained and very pleasant and some of them are not. And I think that we need to be cautious and, you know, and really look at the merits of each, of each project, but I think in general, it is not a bad idea to have higher density in the right infill, you know, in the center part of your community.
Thank you. Victor? Please state your position on vacancy laws and would you make more money available for law enforcement and for cleanup of creeks and other areas?
Oh man, you know, my wife, Norma, just spent five hours the other day cleaning up behind Safeway. I would definitely approve, I would personally give money for solving some of the problems with the vacancies. It is a serious problem and, you know, the people are panhandling aggressively. It's hard for the police to even begin to handle it all. I did the other day go and fill out a paper for the police to make sure that they are able to go in the back there and roust them out, but it's, they're defecating in all kinds of places and it's not, not the nicest thing to have happen. I would definitely would support that.
Thank you very much. You need a question again? Okay.
My dog's going to be seven in a couple of weeks and I've learned a lot in these seven years with my dog. And I know that if I want him to do certain things, if I think ahead, it usually works out better. So we've been having vagrants and, you know, homeless in Willets since I got here and we have not done anything about it. We need to have some kind of city policy and a place where people who are passing through town, who need some kind of help, if they are criminal, well, they're going to be taken care of, but if they're not criminal, if they're just strung out or incapacitated in some way or looking for something, I think that is a service that Willets should provide and it should be coordinated with the county and the state because we still have 101 going through town. But nonetheless, I believe that that is a function that the city should provide. It's the humane thing to do. When you say go and roust them out, they're humans. They're our brothers and sisters.
Thank you. Holly?
Well, the question talks about, you know, giving the police more money, you know, to deal with the vagrant issue. We do have an issue with transients and vagrants in the community and we do have lots. We have anti-camping laws, you know, you're not allowed to spend the night in the parks. We've put things in place to try to give our officers the tools that we can, but they're constantly running into issues with some private property owners, you know, there's only so much that they can do on private property. They have to get the okay from the owners to be able to remove someone, because you could say, oh, so-and-so said I could be there. What concerns, so I think we do need to support our existing law enforcement to give them the tools that they need to be able to support it. We don't have tons of money to be able to throw at this problem. And what concerns me is that I've met more and more people that are doing this as a lifestyle choice, not as a circumstance, not because of life circumstances. And I get the impression that they feel like they're opting out of society, but in reality, they're having a very negative impact on our community if they're, you know, using the rest, going to the bathroom in the creeks. I'm really worried about fire. I mean, especially in this railroad corridor, our fire, fire are put in danger constantly. So I think it's something we need to keep on and try to work out a community solution.
Thank you. Madge?
Wow. I, this is, sort of goes back to a question that came up earlier too, and it's one that has, it's a real conundrum because we don't have money either at the county or city level to really provide extensive services to people who are homeless. And there is an argument that if you have the services there, like in Ukiah, there's that Buddy Eller Center, that some people might consider it sort of a magnet. So there is, there's all sorts of pros and cons to this. I think, as I said earlier, that I think our police force is handling this in a very balanced way. They're respectful and yet also respecting the rights of people that are here in the community that are down on their luck or strung out or looking for work or whatever they're doing, but also respecting the rights of the rest of the community, not to be harassed, not to be having, you know, feces in our creeks and so forth. I do think that there was a recent vote by the city council about adding a police position and Holly was a swing vote in favor of that position. It was partially grant-funded and I would have supported that as well. And two of the other incumbents up here weren't in favor of that, I don't quite know why, but I think that was a relatively economical way to get a little more police staff.
Thank you. Bruce?
Yeah, a major portion of our discretionary budget, our general fund budget is in police services. It's in the neighborhood of 75, 70 percent, 65 to 70 percent. And it, so it's a priority to the city. I think all the council believes that law enforcement needs to have all the tools we can afford to give it. A position that was referred to was a grant, a two-year grant that is funded to fund a partial police officer and the balance is to be made up by the general fund. A couple of us did not support that. We did not have the money to do it. We did not, it would not leave us in a balanced budget. And then you're required to keep that officer for two years after the grant ran out. It, you know, it's one of those tough choices. It's not that you don't want the police officer and you don't want the added help, but it wasn't in the budget. You don't have the money. We're going to go in the hole by doing that. And it was one of those undecided decisions that, you know, it didn't prevail, but it was a choice you have to make up here and it doesn't mean we don't want to address the problem. I want to address it with everything we can, but only within the means that we have available to us. And I think our police force does an excellent job on it. But, you know, we continue to discuss it with them and work on new ways to improve it.
Thank you. Professor? Would you vote to allow outdoor cultivation cannabis in Willet City limit?
Yes.
Professor, would you vote to allow outdoor cultivation cannabis in Willis city limits?
Yes.
Thank you. Holly.
I've already voted to not allow outdoor cultivation. Our current ordinance requires that it would be in a secure greenhouse. I never thought in a million years, when I ran for the city council, that we would be dealing as much with marijuana issues as we did, as we sort of have. We haven't had a lot recently. But the fact is, is we're a very small community. We're like the size of a postage stamp. And you are impacting your neighbors. And the fact was, is that neighbors were being adversely impacted by large outdoor grows in the city limits. I mean, there's, there was grows where, you know, people have a ridiculous amount of plants in their backyard, and it, and it impacts. So I stand by the decision that I made before to put our existing ordinance in place.
Thank you. Matt.
Well, I'm a firm believer in individual freedom. I think anyone who wants to participate in smoking marijuana or growing their own marijuana, that's their freedom, until it impacts somebody else. Then it affects somebody else's freedom. So that's where the city has to balance one person's freedom against somebody else's adverse impact on their, on their rights. So that is what the ordinance that is now in place was an attempt to balance that. And it's a can of worms. I, I mean, I really think what we should have is the, you know, it shouldn't be illegal at the federal level, that would help a lot. It would actually reduce the profit margin, which would reduce the amount of theft and the amount of, you know, wild dogs going in the camp. I mean, there's all sorts of things going on there. But that is not something the city can do anything about. It seems to me that, that there's a reasonable balance being struck in the current ordinance. I would be willing to look at that again, because I wasn't involved in that. But I, I do think one, personal freedom ends when your neighbor is now, you know, having people jump over their fence, or threaten them with guns, or whatever, things like that.
Thank you. Bruce.
When you get elected to the city council, you stand down right here in front, you raise your right arm, and Adrian, or Marilyn, or whoever it used to be at the time, your first oath of office is to defend the Constitution of the United States. And then your second oath is to defend the Constitution of the State of California. To me, this is clearly until our people that are higher pay grade than me, our federal congresspeople and the federal government fix it, this is a federal law, and I'm obligated to defend the Constitution of the United States, which states that it's an illegal substance. And as long as I sit up here, long as I sit up here, I am not going to vote for any legalization of the growing or use of marijuana inside the city limits. And, and maybe that's too definitive. It's a lot easier to make a little wishy-washy statement, but, but that's what I'm gonna do. I'm not gonna vote to allow that. If they, if they approve it at the federal level, I'll approve it here. But they've gotta take the reins and solve that problem. It'd be a violation of the oath of office for me.
Thank you. Victor.
I don't think it should be grown in the city limits. Sometimes I fly back and forth to commute to work, and you'd be surprised, we start now counting how many parcels don't have it grown. Before, we, you know, it was pretty scarce. It is so, so much out there. It's frightening to fly over the mountains at times. You just have to get up and go straight across. I would, I don't allow it, I would not want to allow it in the city to be grown. It's, it gives people, some people headaches, just smelling it.
Okay. So Holly, this is to you, and this is two questions that I've combined, because they're both, they're very similar in, in their nature. So bear with me, and I'll repeat it for everyone if you want it. What will you do to encourage citizens to participate more fully in city council meetings? And what will each, what will you each do to inspire the Willis community to become involved in the issues facing our community?
I can see that those are related. I already work pretty hard to get people here and to get people involved. Many of you might remember that I started a city council office hours at the Many of you may also not know that we are a volunteer group, and we don't have offices at city hall. And so when someone came and asked if they could come see me in my office, I had to tell them that I didn't have one. So I started doing the farmer's market thing, and I haven't been doing it recently. But it's really great, because we already get stopped at the grocery store. I mean, that's sort of, that part of community engagement, you know, you get melting pints of ice cream when you go shopping. That's sort of part of what you take on when you're here. You get calls, and I encourage calls. My phone number's in the phone book. I don't know if anyone uses a phone book anymore, but my phone number is in there. You're welcome to call me. I think that we need to encourage and welcome people to come and, and share their views. And it's not always easy. So I also encourage people, if they don't want to come up here, send us a letter. If you send a letter to city hall, we will all get it, and we'll all receive that. And I think that there is more we can do to get the Latino community here, here at meetings. We provide things in Spanish, my ballot statements in Spanish, but we could do more to encourage involvement, because that's a huge part of our community that's not really being represented.
Can you repeat the second part of that?
Yes, well, let me do the whole thing.
Okay.
What will you do to encourage citizens to participate more fully in city council meetings? And what will you each do to inspire the Willis community to become involved with issues facing our community?
All right. I do agree with Professor Ping Pong, that I think it would be really nice when someone does come to speak to the city council, to get some acknowledgement, some encouragement for doing that. And so I, I think, I've done this, I've spoken to city council many times, and I, I often just feel like you don't know whether anyone really heard you. There's not any feedback. I, I like, I think we should have feedback. I think we can be a little informal. We are a small community. And I think that would encourage people, and that people, I mean, look at how many of you are here tonight. This is wonderful. I think we, we can have more involved citizenry coming to the city council, and then also inspiring you to get involved by supporting volunteer efforts, by listening open-heartedly to the things that, that you bring up. I've been going door to door in the community, and, boy, people have a lot of ideas, a lot of opinions. There's no way we're gonna please everybody, but we can listen to everybody, and we can acknowledge and try to find the, the things that are gonna help the most of, the, you know, common good of everybody. So I, I think we can do that. I would like to have office hours wherever an office could be found, and could be at the farmer's market, or
Well, I mean, I like to think we're accessible. My, my phone number's in the book as well. And, you know, in regards to the, the meetings, you know, there is a formal formality to meetings that, that we're kind of, have to, to follow. But I think we break those rules regularly at city council meetings. You know, we certainly reopen, as mayor, almost, I would never close a public meeting or a public hearing on an issue when there was still somebody that wanted to, to address the council, though the public hearing had been closed. You know, we open it, we, we take comments from the public, and we close it, we discuss it up here, and you can see somebody in the back kind of, that really wants to add something more. We open it up all the time to, to include that person. And I don't think we've done that, been exclusive that way. You know, the, the, meetings are telecast. We've had people come in in their pajamas, been sitting at home, and they get all upset. They come run down and, and talk to us in their pajamas, and they go home. So, you know, it, it, it's open, it's participatory, you know, it, it may feel a little, it may feel a little unloved at times, but I think we try very hard to, to, to be, to as open as we possibly can.
Unaccessible. And I encourage people to call me. My phone book, my phone book, my phone number's in the phone book. I have an email, email address. They can call me in the city, and the city will give me the message. I have, I have a neighbor that I've talked to a lot, that asks questions to her, and sometimes put her on the spot to what, what she'd do. It's to encourage people, and oftentimes they come here when they have a problem, or there's something they need to talk about. And if we can get it on the, on the agenda before, then we can open it up to the public. When someone comes up and starts talking about one subject at an open session, we have to listen, we can't comment, we're not allowed really to comment, we try not to. It's, it's, I'd like to have more people here. If there was a way that I could get more people here, it'd be easier, and we have days like this one, there's a whole mob out here, I wouldn't be so nervous. But anyway, yeah, I would, the more people that are here, it helps us, we open it up to the public to get, get people saying things. And that's what we need to have, is people coming up here expressing their opinions.
Thank you.
Ping pong. I'll donate two tables, we can put them right across the hall. And ping pong is a level playing ground. When we're up here and you're down there, it's, it's not level playing ground. And through the activity of ping pong, we can start to get the idea of how we can ping pong with each other, how we can talk to each other, how we can have some kind of community space where people can meet on a regular, ongoing basis. It's not a business, you don't have to spend money to go there. It's supported by the city, county, with grants or whatever. It's important. As I said earlier, it can take all ages. You can bring a, a second grader down here, and an eighty-year-old can play with him, and everything in between. And the activity itself is enhancing people's mental, emotional, and spiritual well-being. And if Willis got the hint about doing ping pong, it would change everything in this city.
Thank you. I'm assuming this question has to do with all the construction zone, construction projects we have doing in, in the city. What position will you take regarding the use of city streets by bypass construction trucks in traffic?
It's my understanding that the city did get an agreement with Caltrans about not using city streets for the bypass construction vehicles. I am not familiar with the details of that, so I certainly do think it's important to keep some of that heavy machinery off of our streets for the sanity of our residents, and also for the, the impact that it would have on the streets themselves. So I will refer to people that know the details of that.
Bruce.
Yes, we do have a condition in the, in the contract with the, with the state, or with the, the state has with the contractor, that, that only allows the use of city streets for the movement of materials through a permit process from the city. And that is because we were concerned about the degradation of our streets to get to and from the project. Quickly, this, the project will have access from its own roads, from the Hale Creek interchange and from the north end. It will not simply be, you know, accessed by city streets. But our intent is to, to engage a, a contract with the, with the builder of the bypass to allow use on maybe one or two streets in the city, and for that, we would expect reimbursement and improvements to the city's infrastructure at the end of that. And that's why we put it in the contract, so we could control that use and have a method of rehabilitating and improving that street at the end of the project.
There's no sense in me
That's exactly what's in there. He's answered it all.
Well, I, I guess it's my opportunity to weigh in on the whole bypass. And I take the same position as the Farm Bureau, which is that the bypass should be on the west side of town, and that our farmland out here in the valley should be left alone. And I think that's a much smarter way to deal with the traffic issues that we have here in Willis. And who knows what'll happen? But all the logistics of how we take care of things in town, I think are probably managed by the city staff.
Okay. Holly.
Well, Bruce is right, as far as the terms of the permit basis for using city streets. But I think one of the important things for the next person you, the next group that you elect for the city council, is that that relinquishment agreement that we negotiated is going to come into effect. And there's a lot of points on that that will require tenacity on this part of the city council to make sure that they meet the things that were set forward. That has to do with bringing 101 up to a state of good repair. I think we all have an idea in our mind of what a state of good repair is. It involves bridges, we have, you know, creek crossings. It involves potentially, you know, the new interchange up to Sherwood, which is gonna be heavily impacted. Some of the areas, like across from Paradise Cafe, you know, the, the sidewalk is incredibly narrow there, because the property has sort of gotten out, and I noticed they took the, some shrubs away, which is wonderful. But we need to make sure that there are safe sidewalks, safe streets, in a good state of repair. And it really matters who you vote for city council, to make sure that they just, I mean, it's not in Caltrans' best interest to do what's best for the city. So we need to make sure that they step up to their part of the agreement.
I already spoke.
Oh.
Yes. All right. So we're going to the peak oil question. Do you, or do you not believe that our community, like others, is threatened by climate change and peak oil? And what do you think this community could do to meet these pending threats?
Well, I'm not sure if we're at peak oil or not, but I do know that we need to be energy independent. And, and I think that Mendocino County or the north coast has the resources, both in people and in physical resources, in terms of fire control, brush control, and utilization of forest residues, that they could be, be very, contribute significantly to, to energy independence for this country. And, and I think that, in the years ahead, that will be a, a growing business in this north coast. And, and I think that's the way that, you know, we'll interact with it, whether they find, you know, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be an interesting game, that, that certainly get the feeling that the oil producers kind of play the market very sophisticatedly. They kind of get prices up at one point, and, and it looks like alternative fuels are a good deal, and then about the time, they almost get it to where they encourage investment, and then when people get invested, then they dump oil back down to sixty bucks a barrel and watch everybody with it.
Victor.
You know, we, at all the schools, we have great arrays of photovoltaic systems, solar. I mean, unbelievable what the schools have done. And it's, if this is, that's one of the energy, or one of the businesses that is thriving here in Willis, is the solar stores. Gaia's right up the street from here. It's, we need to be worried about the future. Oil is a problem. In my way, I'm looking at getting a smaller car. I drive a truck around a lot now. Doesn't get the best gas mileage, but when I go to Ukiah, I'll take my wife's car, it's a little bit better. The, it's, it is a scary time, and this is a time to worry. We should start riding our bikes more. I have a bicycle, my wife has a bicycle, and I was riding when I wasn't working, but I'll get back to that. That's about it.
Thank you.
I believe peak oil is one of them false theories that was propounded to scare people and to raise the price of oil. I think that scaring us is the way that we get manipulated.
I think that scaring us is the way that we get manipulated. And if we wise up, we will do the things that are necessary, no matter what happens with the economy. So how we use water, how we use our other resources, that's up to us. And if we're smart about how we do it, we can thrive in this environment. And I think the fear mongering is one of our biggest obstacles. And we need to chill out and know that whatever's going to happen is gonna be fine. And quit worrying about peak oil or peak whatever.
Thank you. Holly?
Well, I think there's a lot that the city can do to take a leadership role in my, you know, outside of government life. I'm also on the Board of Willis Economic Localization and helped do a emergency preparedness day. Because I want people to start thinking about just how resilient our community is. You know, it may not be peak oil, it may be a massive earthquake. If the trucks stop coming in and bringing food, we're gonna be in a bad way. And so emergency preparedness really works in lockstep with that. Making sure that you're, you have the things necessary in your home. But also, I think that we as a city could encourage local food production. And this isn't, this is nothing new. Our forefathers living here, we used to grow way more food in the Willis Valley than we do right now. And so if we can encourage that, like, if we can encourage local food production, however we can, we can encourage emergency preparedness from a city level so that we have a plan if for any reason the electrical grid is interrupted. And I think that we have already made strides in energy areas. Like, for example, we have these solar bees, which, it's funny that we had to buy them from somewhere else because I'm pretty sure that Ed Burton invented this thing way before now, but it's up at the reservoir, using solar to mix the water to get rid of algae. So I think that we are doing some, we could do more.
Thank you.
Yeah, big topic. I do think that peak oil is a real concern. There's all sorts of alternatives that come up, like fracking and clean coal and nuclear. And all of them have a lot of very adverse impacts. Including certainly in the case of coal, we're talking about climate change. So, you know, are you gonna get shot by peak oil? Or are you gonna get shot by climate change or both simultaneously? So I do think those are very real concerns. And what I think is that we, at the local level, have to be as prepared as we can and as self-sufficient as we can be. And so it's not about living in fear, it's about doing what we can to be as healthy and sustainable here in our community as we can be. I think there's several things that, I certainly like the emergency preparedness approach, individuals as well as the community, working with other agencies to make sure we have emergency supplies. I think improving pedestrian and bike safety in town would help us get off, you know, some of our gas addiction. I actually wonder if we couldn't have at least some of the police activity be not in the sort of gas guzzling vehicles. Maybe we could be a little more efficient at the city government level with our energy use. So I agree, we could take some leadership in that.
Thank you all very much. And there's five questions we didn't get to. I apologize, so please, if you have a chance to talk to the candidates after this, you, please do that. I hope the candidates could stick around. Next year is a big year. Willis turns 125 years old. And you're going to be, hopefully, either elected or re-elected this fall, representing us for the next four years. You're gonna have 90 seconds now to tell us why you should either be elected or re-elected. Thank you very much. We started with, Victor, you were first.
Yes.
So actually, we're gonna start with Professor Ping Pong. And you will be last, Victor.
Okay.
I read this article that since 1978, California has executed 13 death row inmates at the cost of $4.5 billion. That's $300 million per execution. If that isn't ridiculous, 300 million for one execution. The absurdity of government to me is unfathomable. And since I've been dabbling in various aspects of the government, I was on the mental health board. And that was kind of a joke. So I thought that I should be on the city council and see what this is all about. And that's why I'm running. And I will bring some ping pong to Willis, I guarantee.
Thank you very much. Holly?
Well, I wanna thank all the sponsors again for having us. I think this is such a wonderful turnout. I am now, this is my eighth year on the board. I was really young when I first got elected. And I think I've learned a great deal. I believe I bring balance to the board. I think I will continue to do that. As I mentioned, I think I am very good with community engagement. And I think being a good facilitator is also very important. I just wanna specify how important your vote is. And I know all of you don't live in the city limits. But the last city council election was decided by three votes. Your vote matters. It matters that when your ballot comes, you fill it out. If you do not have, if you've moved recently, if you're not sure if you're registered to vote, I brought voter registration forms, they're out on the table outside. And if those all get taken, we can get you more. Because it's incredibly important that you participate in this process. That's what makes it so wonderful. This is direct democracy. You get to vote for us and you get to tell us how we're doing every four years. So I think I've gained a lot of knowledge in this time. I think there's a lot of work to do and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank our sponsors and thank Sheriff Alman for moderating this. Very, very well done. I'd also like to thank all of the city council members who have served over the years as volunteers. They are not paid. They do get health benefits, that's all. These people are very dedicated, they love our community and that's why they're up here. And that's why I am running for city council too. But I really do give great credit to anyone who is willing to serve on the city council and our staff and all those wonderful volunteers that we were talking about. There is, this community doesn't thrive by just a few people. It's a lot of people put in their effort. So I really want to thank and acknowledge all those people who serve. I will stay and I'd love to hear questions and ideas that you have. I brought some of my pamphlets, it gives a lot of information about my background. And as I said, I think I'm very well qualified to serve. I have a lot of relevant experience. I think I'm very open-minded and would seek, you know, very problem-solving approaches to the issues that come before city council. So if anyone would like to endorse me, in addition to voting for me, that would be great. But if you wanna endorse me, even if you don't live in the city limits, that's okay. I have endorsement forums out there. And if you have a good place for a yard sign, let me know. Thank you.
Bruce?
What I wanted to finish saying in my opening statement was, is what's important to me and why I run for the city council is I want a place for my children and my grandchildren to live and a place for them to make a living. My parents provided that for me by starting a business in Willis. And I came back, I started a business in Willis and my son came back and he's working in my business. And I know a number of people in the community are doing that. And I want to be here so that my grandchildren can be here. And that's my goal, to keep vitality here so people can come back. And we're seeing more and more of it. I just, I'm surprised at how many people that I see that their kids are back and making a living in town. I think that, you know, the reason you, I would like you to vote for me or that the city should have me on the city council is that we do have a, we have a new staff. We've got a great staff at the city, but they've only been here a couple of years. We've had a tremendous turnover. And, you know, institutional knowledge of knowing what the, where the brick rails issue came from back 30 years, knowing where that started is very important in formulating that decision. And I think I bring that to the city. I've been involved in city government for 20 years. I've lived here and participated more. And I think that's an important component in making city decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the people that brought this about today. The reason why I ran years ago and I ran this last time is that I feel that the city should be run like a business. It's very important. I've been in business myself for 48 years and been very successful. And I think there's hard decisions that have to be made. I'm willing to do that. And I wanna continue on with where we started. I've been on city council for eight years now. And I bring something to the board that helps the city, and I feel I do. And I'd like to be elected again. Thank you.